Yes, it is. This is.
No, it's not good. Few more trees got tested by the weather. Only the strong survive.
I'll tell you what, like, that this mission's over, there shouldn't be any dead stuff left in the tree.
That's what I was thinking last night.
Yeah, well, we left it roll the leaves off. Wendy would have rolled the leaves off.
Couple of day traders over there.
All right, it is nine AM. I am going to call our weekly Cottonton County Board of Commissioner meeting to order. It is Tuesday, June 16th. Start with the pledge of allegiance. I don't know who we all have on. Sarah's on. Is anyone else on?
No, just, yeah.
Okay.
That's just my computer here.
Okay, all right. So, Lee, would you lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the United States. On the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lee. Item number two on the agenda is to call for public comment. If there is anyone who would like to address the board that is an item that is not on the agenda, we will do that during the open part of the meeting just for information only. Also, we are streaming live YouTube and I guess I would ask if you have your cell phones on, sorry, to please silence them. Otherwise, we're gonna get really fat, getting all these donuts. So, item number three, conflict of interest. Is there any items on the agenda that's conflict interest to the other commissioners?
No, no.
Nope.
All right, very good. Item number four, action to approve the agenda.
So.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the June 9th, 2020 meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any additions, corrections? Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose that motion carries. Item number six, monthly reports. Facility manager, Steve, you want to come and fill us in?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
Beautiful morning, Steve.
Not for spring.
Well, think of all the low spots that are drying out from all the water.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna start out with the government building. Of course, we reopened and it seemed like things would be going pretty smoothly on that order. Detention Center, over at the detention center, they do have the storage room for the food services completed. And I don't know if they've got, I know they got a bunch of food already stocked in there, so, and stuff. And then they've done some internet wired cable being strong, so they had for some additional room for, for Marcy, so she can keep tabs of all the food stuff. And then at the extension building, of course, we opened and with election, I believe election went pretty smoothly. Right, Cindy?
Yeah, it did, yep.
And then yesterday, met with Chuck Langner. The ag committee is looking at doing a little bit of redoing fencing, some fencing inside the sale ring to make it a lot easier for when we have the auction, for the cattle auction. And then they're looking at building a new sale block in there, make it a lot aluminum. There we go. Thank you. That is a tongue twister for me. It always has been. Lot lighter.
Sale block?
Yep.
What the auctioneer says. Portable.
And then also looking at doing some electrical outlets out in the barns, more in the center. So that is what is happening there. Again?
Yeah.
Well, I know there's been a dent in there for quite some time, recent. Oh. Okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, bottom panel got.
Okay.
Bunged up pretty bad. And then the, right to the east of the overhead door, looks like somebody hit the building, run into it. So.
I was not notified of that yet, so. And stuff, so. Weed. Last week, went out to Rapid City, quick trip out to Rapid on Tuesday, collected the poison hemlock larvae. Was in Rapid City for about a total of four hours and headed back again, distribute them on Wednesday, the 10th in the area in Cottonton and Dulhamland County areas. Then we had started the first of June with some roadside spraying with the trucks. Of course, that has been a battle here in the last week or so. We get a couple of days of good and then we struggle again for a little over a week. And then park, I'm gonna have Scott Wall come up and introduce himself.
Good morning again, Scott. Good morning.
Good morning, Scott.
Morning.
Scott is here present. His wife is, of course, out at the park. So we had, and so we had to watch for the office when it opens up here in another hour. So we had, but I'll tell, have you tell you about yourself a little bit.
Well, a little bit. What's going on at the park anyway is it's been a learning experience, obviously. We just started here in April and between the COVID cancellations, movement, we're doing our, the best we can as far as getting people moved around or canceled, enforcing some policies that we've instituted and the commission's instituted. And like I say, it's been a learning experience, learn a computer system. We're looking in the future at a different system that's cloud based and looking toward the future. We're not trying to look past and see forward. We're battling the winds, obviously. We are full this weekend, last weekend, next weekend, 4th of July. So we are getting some good revenue coming in. People from out of town are coming, particularly Minnesota people that have nowhere to go. As far away as Mankato and Omaha, we've seen a tremendous increase in people wanting to stay long term. Construction workers on the wind farm, et cetera. And so it's so far been a good experience for my wife and I. We really enjoy the park experience. We're both campers. We love it. We're trying to make it a good experience for people coming into the park. So if I have, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them as best I can. Steve's been a tremendous asset and supporter of us. He's happy with what we're doing. We hopefully are, you guys are happy with us too.
Scott, we changed our rates this year a little bit. Are you hearing any feedback from those?
No, and actually, you guys are aware, we've already started booking for 2021 and we've raised the rates for that. And we really haven't gotten any pushback on the rates other than the policy that you pay upfront right away and then long term people pay when they book, show up next year. Really haven't gotten a lot of kickback on that.
Okay.
Scott, Rick is sitting out here in highway department and I know there's a lot of cleanup out there.
Yes.
Are you guys able to work together? But I know it's a busy time for the highway department, but some of that stuff is too big for the equipment you have out there to handle.
Yes.
And I.
I can speak on that. Currently, right now, I haven't talked Rick to turn around, have him come out. Currently, we have gotten most of the stuff moved. I will have to have him come out and do some trees that's in the driveway that's kind of hanging over the, in the water. And so we need a little bit bigger than a skid steer to pull them out. So that, but yeah. As far as that goes, and so with the storm that we had on the 4th of June, there was nearly 30 trees that had, had either broke off or went down in the park. It was quite a mess out there. We went out Thursday evening, got some stuff out of the road, out of the driveway, and up by the office, so at least it could make it passable. And then Friday, we spent quite a bit of the day getting things of the camping area cleaned up. Of course, the shelter area being not being used, we kind of, they've been working on that. And then, of course, again, yesterday morning, there was a cloud burst again and knocked down four more trees and a bunch more branches again. So they're getting kind of tired of picking up trees.
We did lose power for about an hour yesterday morning, 6:30 to 7:30, and that came back right away. There's still one big, big tree way up in the northwest corner that is huge. I don't know how we're gonna get that.
He's planning on cutting some of it down in pieces is what he's planning on doing. It's laying flat pretty well on the ground, uprooted. So yeah.
Did that go down in the storm?
Went down in the first storm.
Ground is so saturated and soft.
This was non-flying tree. But there was a couple.
Very last tree in the far.
Far northwest corner.
I have a couple questions. So our phone lines were down because of the storm.
Our phone line was down because of the storm. Got last week a temporary one coming out of the, out of the house. Two, they had a cordless out in the office. And then yesterday, finally, we got the phone line fixed in the office.
The tree had come on the outside of the office and it snagged a wire and ripped it right out of the wall in the office. Still had access in the house. We would run back and forth and get to the computer that way. That, that cloud based system wouldn't help in that regard.
Right.
Another thing, so with that, you know, we, just to let people know or put it on the website or something, you know, if they're not able to get through the phone, that they can always email a reservation. Is that something that?
Yeah, that was still up.
That was still up. The emails, the online reservation was still up. Emails were still up. There was a lot of correspondence with emails. And so of course, you know, there's a, I think you said you get about 50/50.
Yeah, out of 137 last week, 67 of them were online. So it was about half.
So do we have that somewhere though that people will know, like, we put it on our website or is it on the website? I guess.
It is on the website to get.
You're not our answering machine.
Okay, very good.
If we're not here for some reason, we're out in the park talking to people or whatever, we leave a message on the door, you know, see Cottonton Network.
Very good. Just wasn't sure if we talked about that. I didn't remember if we said it was on or gonna put it on. Yeah, so even though we're having, previously, you know, we're having some cancellations, we had no problem filling those spots. We have waiting lists.
Now, we do have waiting lists. Our 4th of July waiting list is probably 12 deep at this point. For Father's Day this weekend, I think we're three or four back. And then looking into July, it's a little quieter.
Right now.
But.
Right now.
Like I say, a lot of people are coming from out of town. And booking online.
Very good. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
One thing I, I need to visit with Steve about is the car show group meets.
September.
September 24th, I think, out in the park.
July 24th, they meet, right, for a meeting?
They're, they're meeting to decide what they're gonna do in September. And I have it on my notes in the back there.
Really, there's enough room out there that they could spread out pretty well, so I don't.
I mean, it doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem to hurt during the fall season, but you know, that's, that's a group. They need to make the decision if they're gonna hold it, I'm sure. And so we had, and I think one of the things and so that he had left me a note was if they do cancel because of the COVID, more or less is their cancellation fee. And I guess that has to be determined.
They've been, they've been pretty loyal for many years.
Right.
I would just say it's kind of out of all of our control.
I think we'll be able to fill those spots pretty fast if.
Right.
We will. I think their question is can we transfer them to the next year at current rate? Because obviously we won't up in our rates next year. And that's a whole nother ballgame as far as the system is concerned and what we work with in campground master program. You know, when they show up next year, that's the old rate. And that's something we haven't determined.
Right.
Right.
We're gonna handle that yet. So I guess we can't decide until they.
Food for thought and just kind of, yeah.
Until they know what they're doing.
Yeah.
You know, we're just trying to think ahead a little bit.
Sounds good.
Well, that's why we have gifted people like you to make those tough decisions.
We need to find some firewood. We have to find some firewood.
Firewood and firewood has been going, they, it's because of all the increase and so not estateers. Firewood has just been moving like crazy out there.
Will you be able to burn the stuff now that's gone down?
It's not until next year, it has almost dry out. That's, that's our issue right now. We're gonna be in short supply of firewood out there.
I have a question on that. Do we have to be careful of where we get this from, like with the, that beetle thing going on?
Yeah, I know.
You can't, you can't transport it into, from a known.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, they cannot distribute any firewood in many hot and linkin county period at all. I know out of staters are not to bring in firewood. And so we had, we're trying to turn around limited that it's just locally in the local area.
Might be something put.
We might have to look at maybe doing outsourced a little bit for some firewood for temporary till we can get some stock and restocked and so.
Or maybe a list of local people that sell it.
Right. And I believe Scott said he.
I think I might have a line on somebody.
I've got a font pattern on that already.
Also, maybe that's something we could just put on our website for a quick little thing, you know, if you have any firewood that you're willing to donate or whatever.
And when people look to, we tell them we're temporarily out. If you have some local wood that you can bring in, great. But please don't bring anything outside of the county Steve mentioned.
We get that word out there, maybe there'll be individuals upset.
And we'll have to add that in. I'll have to get that put on the website.
Yeah, just for us.
So when they go on to look that.
How about the city? Where do they get theirs from?
They actually, the city at the city park, they do not, it's another vendor that actually does it. I believe the vendor, I believe it's out of Clear Lake, that actually supplies.
They basically just trade the service for the wood. They don't get involved in that.
Yeah, they just basically have it, have it out there and it's another vendor.
I think I probably know, and that, those are those tree trimmers that go around.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Get it fixed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we will move on to 6B, which is our highway soup. He'd give us his report. And we also have number nine. We'll probably just as well have you do that while you're sitting here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hey, good, Rick.
Piggyback off what they were talking about, the trees out of the park. We can help, but it'd be on days where we can't haul dirt. Because we have everybody that's available in a truck, a loader, or a mortar grader.
Right.
So that's what we're doing.
Trying to get the road shape back up again.
Yeah.
Now they're drying out finally, I would hope.
Yeah, and building up. All right, the guys, they completed all their patching going around the county on the blacktop roads. They did a little bit for Pelican Township and Lake Township. And now that the load limits are off, I see we have a couple more spots that we'll have to go back and repatch. But for the most part, things are holding together pretty good on that. We've replaced a couple of culverts that were plugged, cleaned out some ends so the water flowed a little better in few places. We're currently, we have started building up four spots on A1. There's two homes, two families that live there on the first mile west of County Road 23. And there's four spots that we have to build up. They don't have to drive through any water, but what we built up with the hurricane winds we've had has damaged some of that. Cause we can't, we can't haul enough riprap and dirt to stay ahead of us some places.
How was it looking around their homes? Like, is that starting to go down some? Cause at one, it was like almost up to their windows.
Last week, when we had an inch of rain here, they had three inches of rain over there. So everything that had evaporated or runoff has congregated in the same spot. We have also stockpiled some riprap in our yard, so when we do need to go out and put some riprap down. And we do have some on the east, east side of town and some in the southeast corner. But we had to wait on the southeast corner because it's on a township road. And there was a big soft spot that we had to get healed up before we could haul out of that. And that should be good to go now, so. As you know, the load limits came off the 4th of June. Like I said, we've only got a couple of spots that I've noticed and I haven't heard any reports from the outside guys if they've had any blowouts since the load limits came off. But I do know there's a couple over by Tinker Town that we'll have to fix. The bridge rail that was damaged with the garbage truck, west of, the casino has been repaired. We have a small piece that we have to fix, but other than that, it's just about, the approach rail is all done. We have a little bit on the guard rail. There's about a three foot section that we had to cut off, have straightened and we'll have to weld that back on and that will be complete. The bill for what has been done has been sent to the insurance company and they've been in contact with the people that did, did the repairs. June 4th, we had several trees go down on, on County Road 115A. We worked until about 11:30 getting that opened up. There was on 10-2 west of Memorial Park, there was some trees went down on that. There was a call on our answering machine, so apparently one of the farmers pushed them off the road. On June 7th, I got a call at 11:30 that night that there was three fell on the road. So there's been a lot of trees. Yesterday, we had to go to Cransburg with a loader and a few guys to move trees off the county road there that was blocking the road.
I drove over there yesterday and took pictures. That was crazy.
Yep. The guys also, one of the guys lives out in country and there was some branches on the road. So they just took chainsaws on their way out to the loader and drug those off by hand. So we're, we're getting little piles of trees all over the place that, that we have.
Anything we can make firewood out of?
Next year.
As far as I can turn to make firewood out of, you just gotta come and get it.
Gotta save it though, it's green.
Yeah, on the 5th of June, I received a call from personnel where we're gonna replace the bridge on County Road 4. Apparently, the contractor that had them do the sign work, put the barricades up and closed the road and then the wind took them down. The contractor wasn't ready to work on the bridge yet. He's not exactly sure. Should be relatively quick before they start working on the bridge. But we collected the barricades out of the ditch and took the rest of them down, so road is back open.
Until it's ready to be done.
On 9th of June, when we had the three inches of rain over in the Henry area, we had to close County Road 10. This is a spot that we worked on last year, got it two or three feet out of the water. It was close, but that pushed it under again. There's one home that's east of there. They're about two and a quarter miles east of County Road 27, which is three miles north of Henry. They had to drive through the water a little bit. The water was less than six inches deep and we started building that up yesterday. Because there's roughly almost 2,100 feet of road there that we're gonna have to build up. Because that's the only way out. Those people have, the township road that goes to the south is underwater. I was hoping that wasn't, but that's not the case. So this is the only way they have out. So there, we're currently working on that, trying to get that so they don't have to drive through the water to get out, so.
And that is our responsibility as the road. Yeah.
Blatner with the wind towers has started the second phase. They're building approaches. They're already pouring cement for the towers south of Waverly down to the county line. And they're also working on the first phase, narrowing up the approaches and cleaning up their area that they worked on last year. So they're, I'm not exactly sure when they'll be done with the first phase, so Banner can go in and assess everything. Then we can start putting things back together because there's numerous miles of blacktop that are going to have to be replaced.
Yeah, a lot of semis going by my house with tower equipment on it.
And they, they abandoned the batch plant area that they had last year. And they moved that one mile north of Cransburg and half mile to the east, right by Modak Dairy. So that took a little bit of the stuff off up there by Waverly South Shore. But there's still a lot of miles that are damaged, so.
Yeah.
And I guess that's about all I have on this, so.
So then we can move on to item number nine, action to approve the job description for Highway Department shop foreman. Oh, I should have said, does any of you have any other questions for Rick?
All right. That road, that road that's gotta be replaced up there, Rick, I guess, just talking about that or touching on that, that's part of the road agreement that we had.
Yes.
With them.
Yeah, all the roads that are damaged up there is in the hall road agreement, so.
So they'll come in and fix those.
Responsible. Yeah, they're, they're responsible for it, but.
They'll come in.
There'll be some negotiation, I'm sure, so.
Of the process of how.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's, it's gonna be costly.
So now this new area, we have hall roads already in place for that too as well.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Then we'll move on to number nine then. Action to approve a job description for Highway Department shop foreman. I don't know if you want to do a little explanation first.
Did you all get the, this is just, it's a pay raise and moving our mechanic into a shop foreman. So he has a little authority to help guide the guys when they're in there as to just, you know, if they need to have something, if he needs to have something done when we're not around, give him the authority to tell people what to do and how to do it. And make sure they wear their safety equipment and all that good stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any other discussion amongst commissioners? And this is something that you have not had before. This is a new.
This is a new position.
Just for clarification on his.
So we won't, this won't require us to hire a replacement.
No, no, because we already had a mechanic and I'm just moving his position up to a shop foreman. Basically, everything will stay the same. He just has a little authority to. moving his position up to a shop foreman. Basically, everything will stay the same. He just has a little authority to direct the guys on things to do and.
And he has a new pay scale.
Yeah, and a new pay scale.
And also that helps us um, you know, with our insurance, because if you have somebody who's taking care of safety measures and making sure those are getting followed correctly, I mean, that's all part of.
Rick, one question that I have is on the minimum qualifications. It says with certification in diesel mechanics, is that a pretty standard uh certification for employees at the highway shop?
For the mechanic, yes.
Okay, okay. I, I didn't know, so.
What's that? What's the organization or the testing organization? Well, there's a, oh, it's a, I can, I can. I could see the.
Certified Diesel Mechanic.
There you go.
I'm just wondering, does that limit the pool of people that, you know, are, are we limiting it too much to a certain?
No, because there's, there's a lot of people out there with our VOTEC.
Yeah, yeah.
You know? That's, that helps the pool a lot, so.
When, when you graduate from VOTEC with a diesel degree over here, that would qualify you here, yes.
And the thing is, is you would need to have someone with those sort of, uh that sort of knowledge to be able to do this duty. So I guess it, you know, if it eliminates some, it's then the right people to do the job.
Yeah, and our, our mechanic is, is good at all that stuff, and he's, he's an excellent welder. He manufactures a lot of our stuff. Matter of fact, uh our old air compressor that was broken this spring, he had to manufacture parts to get it back to going, cause uh it's a military where it came from, and parts are not ready, readily available for it, so he did a little manufacturing to get that going, and he gave us a little class this morning on the do's and don'ts of running it, so.
Yeah, he doesn't wanna have to fix it.
Yep, absolutely.
Well, they're not readily available. They're not in existence, pretty much.
Get, just a question on the certification, if you manage your, um, so is that a, like a, like a card carrying certificate, or is it just, you just kind of mean like he's been trained properly and?
He's been trained. He had training before he came.
Right.
I think he has a, a degree from Lake Area for welding, and then he was in the military.
Yeah.
And uh he has so many years of experience of diesel mechanics, so.
Just down, down the road, we might wanna make sure that we, the certification's the right word, you know, you could, you could say education, cause a lot of certification means you're, you know, certified.
That's, that's kind of where I was going with that is, or, and then if that's a minimum requirement, then we should have that on file, but we'll kind of lease a copy of the certification.
Yeah.
At the time that they applied for that position, so we have it, but otherwise uh be something as simple as training or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, and I, would you wanna, may have missed that part when I was putting it together, the equivalent, so.
Well, I could have meant my emotions, just to say certification or equivalent in diesel mechanics, if that'd be okay? So I'd, I'd make, I'd, I'll just.
Wait, wait, what are we doing here?
So I, I made a motion to, to approve this job description. Um, can I, probably the easiest thing would be just to modify.
The minimum qualifications, number one.
The easiest thing to do is just fix the job description, and then you're still approving it.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Auditor.
We try to keep it simple here.
Alright, so, so it's gonna say, so your motion is certification or equivalent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's just uh let the highway superintendent fix the job description and we'll prove it.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, so we need to vote on that then. Um, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to item number seven, action to accept a proposal for the Human Resource and Labor Negotiations Services. Lee, would you want to take the lead on that?
Sure, um, so uh the, just, you, you know, we got two proposals. I went through them. I think, I think most people had a chance to go through them. They're pretty straightforward. Um, both were good, I thought, so we had a proposal. Let me see, I can show people what the cover of these things looks like. One from Yeah, one from Multi Business Solutions, and they're out of Fergus Falls in Wilmot, South Dakota, and then another one from uh HR, HR Partners. Um, and that also, they're out of the Twin Cities, out of Bloomington, um, and also a good proposal. Um, my, I'll make a motion, though, that we accept the proposal of Multi Business Solutions. Um, and if uh there's, I can explain why in the discussion, if anybody's wanting to second that.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, um, so what uh, what I liked about Multi Business Solutions was, like I said, both proposals demonstrated a good understanding of our situation. Um, however, the, the, there's a difference in cost. Okay, so both proposals included a review of the employee handbook, and all the, all the HR advice that we get, similar to what Terry is giving us now. Um, and they could help us, for example, they'd be the perfect people to go through the job descriptions and things like that, and both, both had a plan to go through different, different things, um, you know, go through the job descriptions, employee handbook. Um, so that was included in both proposals. The, the HR Partners proposal included a, a wage and compensation study, which that sent the price up some. However, they did, they did a very good job of explaining their cost structure in that one, so even if we pull that piece out, that, that wage study that we're, we've been talking about kind of separately, um, the price is still lower on Multi Business Solutions, so um, I would move that we, that's the reason for the motion to accept Multi Business Solutions proposal, and also I think it's having them in the, in the region is gonna be a little easier as well. Um, and like I said, I think, you know, appreciate both uh proposers um, providing this because it does take a lot of work to put these together, and uh so that is my motion, for the answer any questions.
Question, Lee. Just the Meyer one, they've got, I read this too, and it's got the Wilmot. Uh, do they have an office in Wilmot?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah. Well, I think, yeah, I think they probably use their cell phones typically, and you're asking about the phone number not being a six oh five number? So, yeah, I think they, most people use. Yeah, well, she, I think, I think the, the particular person um that would be assigned to our, as our, basically our HR person um, lives in Wilmot, I believe.
Okay. That's what I told you.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I understood it. I'm not, I'm not too concerned about that. They've worked, done plenty of work in South Dakota. Um, and, and in the whole region, a little bit in North Dakota as well, so.
Kind of makes them a little well-rounded that when you see different things in different places.
Both had, both had good, um, good references, um, so you know, I'd, I'd say the, 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 the other thing about Multi Business Solutions is they've done a little bit more, well, they've done more work in South Dakota than uh the other one. The other one had some, some work, but um, you know, some. And now, just so people understand that if we accept this proposal, they're still gonna have to provide us a contract. Yeah, well, well, that'd be a separate action, I think, to have, to authorize the chair to, to sign that, so. So there's still another gate to go through.
So is that a motion?
I don't know, does anyone else have any discussion? Are we ready to vote on?
Just, just so people know what the, the amounts we're talking about, so the one multi-business was um uh twenty-four hundred a month, okay? So, and then the other, the other one was four thousand, but would they would, I, I talked to them, they would take out four um, to take out that wage, the wage study, however, it still would work out. Um, when I, when I did, ran the numbers, the numbers were still higher on that one than they were on the Multi Business Solutions, so.
Very good. Alright, you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries.
And by the way, Madam Chair, so this will give us a little bit, an extra week to, to get the contract in order and for them to overlap with Terry a little bit, to have some some good overlap, so appreciate it.
Very good. Get that all done before he's off our payroll and moving on to the next his next phase. Um, okay. Item number eight, action to approve an employee's cell phone stipend. Uh, I texted Steve to see if he wanted to be here for this. I don't know. He hasn't replied back yet, maybe he left the building, so I don't know. Cindy, do you have any explanation? Just, I mean, pretty straightforward, he's asking.
I believe the county was providing this employee with a county phone. Um, and Steve canceled that contract and wanted to go with the employee stipend for using their own phone or being on call and that type of thing.
I believe that was a cost savings for Steve to take that route by getting rid of those phones, and then I think it was still cheaper to probably pay this stipend.
Yeah.
So I don't know if anyone.
I think that's, you know, I'm not positive, but I think that's what the intent was.
Does, I'll, I'll make a motion to, to approve this, and we can talk about it in some more discussion.
Alright. Second, okay.
So I guess the question would, so we've, we've been talking a lot about cell phone stipends off and on, um, this might be something that the HR folks could help us look into a little bit to sort that out, um, but uh, yeah, this is kind of this is current policy, if I'm not mistaken, that this amount for, for maintenance works well.
Right, and I think, oh, there's Steve. You wanna come on up? We're just trying to discuss this. Maybe you can give us a little explanation.
The question I have is what we have in front of us, we have all the way back, you know. authorized at twenty-five dollars for June.
What it is, is authorizing for each month. Like, this is what is submitted to uh Debbie, so that each month she can mark off to be cell phone stipend.
But you want this effective June first.
Yes, effective June first. Um, this is one where had AT&T cell phones and discontinued the AT&T phones for Milo and Carol and, and Brian, so.
And that was because of cost savings.
Yep, cost savings.
So it's, it's still a cost savings by doing this, opposed to I think there's another matter too, that, you know, if we are expecting individuals to be answering their phones on the off time, I mean, you almost have to do a stipend or else you.
Brian, Brian is especially on call every, like every third week or at the detention center, it's like that, and this is uh, and currently, right now, it's every other week until Steve is acclimated to the jail and everything going on right now, so.
Any other questions or anything for Steve? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Okay, item number ten, discussion possible action on COVID nineteen practices and procedures.
Um, I do have an email here that was sent out by sent out by the County Commissioners Association last week. Governor would like um, estimates on the county's costs from the time period March first through December thirty-first, twenty twenty, for PPE expenses, Sheriff's Department payroll expenses, and the county public health nurse payroll expenses. That's all they're asking for at this time, and this is coming from the governor's office. So they're asking for our estimates on what we've spent, or what we will spend from March first through December thirty-first. So that would be our Plexiglas, our masks, our sanitizing, um, the, I, the emergency. But problem is, they just moved the data, the time up till two o'clock this afternoon.
Oh, wow.
That was my next question. There was, you know, Madam Chair, this uh, there was talk, and I, I, I know we're still waiting for some, some clarification, so this sounds like some clarification from the governor's office on what they're.
This is, this is coming from Eric Erickson, who is um yes, 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 and they did send it out, I think it was last Thursday or Friday. Initially, they wanted it, do the information by tomorrow, Wednesday, but I just got an email now that the governor's office has moved it up to two o'clock this afternoon. And it's just estimates. They don't, they don't want us to provide invoices or anything like that, so I can take the sheriff's office, and when we're all kind of questioning why, why they want the sheriff's office payroll.
Well, I think if they, if they had to do maybe additional hours, because there was discussion.
Nope, it's just sheriff's office payroll. There is no talk about extra hours, so I don't under, none of us understand where that request is coming from.
So they were quite specific as to what.
Sheriff's Office and County Health Nurse. So I, I included our contract for the county health nurse because we don't pay their salaries, but I assume I should should provide them with the clerical staff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What about, what about the added election expenses, the mailing and that kind of stuff? Would that be?
Nope, nope, that is not included in this request.
Not yet.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just PPE and salaries for right now.
Right, so you.
Very specific.
You've talked to Jamie. I mean, Sherry's been keeping track of a lot of that.
Working on it, but the fact that they moved it up to two o'clock this afternoon is gonna.
Grant proposal might help too, that one that we did.
We can't use anything that was paid for.
Okay, so they don't want that, okay.
Nope, they, they just, they want salaries and that's it. We are not to include the detention center um, staff at all because they did get a grant for that stuff, but anything that was paid for with a grant is not allowed. Kind of like double dipping, so anyway.
I, I think just to add to this discussion a little bit is for people's awareness, is we're kinda, I mean, this is, sounds like a bit of guidance from, from the state level. Um, but that's kind of the debate in, with the way the, the CARES Act reads is that a jurisdiction has to have over five hundred, population of over five hundred thousand, therefore in South Dakota, it's go, everything goes through the state.
Right.
So, so all the, all the uh, you know, the, the reimbursements or whatever, whatever happens has to take place with the state. So as, and each state has to sort out exactly how they're gonna handle that, so maybe this is part of that.
Yeah, and you know, I really, I received PPE items from the Secretary of State's office, but they were paid for with half a grant funds for my election, so I can't submit any amount there. I did have, you know, the individual who secured all the um sanitizing wipes for me, which came to less than two hundred dollars. I will include that, but it'll be our um our dropdown Plexiglas, yes.
See, and I think, you know, the dollars that the state received, I don't know if the governor's heard back. She was wanting to use some of that for revenue, but it was quite specific that it can only be used for these sorts of things at this time, I believe, so I suppose that's where they're trying to just figure out statewide. Have been incurred so far, where that would come on that.
And there's also, and just talking to some of the legislators, you know, there's, I think there's still some debate on this. I'm not, I can't speak for certain, but you know, things like, do you do you say overtime that's related to this?
This is a starting point, apparently.
Just to, I suppose, just to get a general idea of what kind of dollars is.
If we're gonna have enough to justify sharing, okay, alright.
Alright. Very good. We'll move on to item number eleven, action to approve claims for payment.
Uh, nothing for eleven or twelve.
Alright, we have a few. Uh, item number thirteen, then, action to approve personnel changes.
Um, we have several of these. I had a couple more come in after I um sent them out to you. The first one is Steve Kelson. He is temporary COVID nineteen monitor downstairs, fifteen dollars an hour. Adam Reeves is a deputy sheriff, and he'll, he's doing anniversary step, increase to step seven, twenty-six, thirty-seven per hour. Todd Warnie is um, the, falls under the new job description that you just approved, shop foreman mechanic. Step fourteen, twenty-six, eighteen. He will also receive an extra ten cents per hour for the education incentive. Jeff Argo is maintenance two at the highway, do a step increase to step five, twenty ninety-eight per hour. Robin Ryder is highway maintenance two, do a step increase to step eight, twenty-two seventy-one an hour. Jenna Desson has been hired at the sheriff's office uh to replace the criminal civil support coordinator to fill that empty position.
What was that name?
Jenna Desson. D E S E N is what it looks like to me.
Alright, yeah, I can understand.
Um, step seven, twenty twenty, what? No, it's a, it's definitely a D. Oh, it could be a G, yep, yeah, it could be a G. Um, like I said, it's kind of hard to read. She is from, she's a Parmley, from Waterton, yes. Step seven, twenty twenty-five an hour. Her start date was yesterday. And then we have Dave Handchit, a seasonal weed sprayer, step one, fourteen fifty per hour, effective June first.
I have a motion to approve those.
I'm, I'll make a motion to approve these uh personnel changes.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second? Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Yeah, here, did, did you move?
Yeah, second.
Yeah, he moved.
Okay.
Oh, they all second.
Okay, then you second. Sorry, Troy, I didn't, I heard Lee talking. I, it was fast, I'd have to shoot. Any other discussions? We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Alright, item number fourteen, action to approve travel requests.
One travel request, and I believe Sarah is on. This comes from our welfare director.
Sarah. Okay, there she is.
Hi, sir.
Morning, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, this travel request came from Kim, Kim B. Tweet. I can't ever say her name correctly. Kim B. is asking, she contacted me to request to give a presentation for the DOC at their fall convention, the annual meeting. I gave a presentation about ten years ago and they're just asking for that back. It, it's a presentation on poverty and a little bit about cultural diversity, how it helps with their probation officers, specifically for the juvenile when they're working with families to, acknowledge some of the rules that we have in different classes and to work with them in a way that just brings them better together to move forward. So at this time, all costs, I'm sorry, all costs would be covered by the Department of Corrections. There would be no expenses. At this time, they are planning on having the conference in, in person. And if that, unless something with COVID happens, that would be changed on that. So just requesting approval to, give a presentation per their request.
Sarah, would you be, would you be, what dates would you be out of the office then?
It, I'm estimating it would be just one day. It would be dependent when I'm scheduled. The conference is set for September first through third. If I get approval to, to attend, I could request that. Or I could, I would know the time and date. It's in Mitchell, so that typically can be a, a down and back trip.
Your, your part-time employee would be able to staff the office in your absence?
I would anticipate that, yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'm also like Gable, second by Waterman. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, number fifteen, public notices. Probably don't have any of those going on yet. Any old business? Think of any, I don't know if anyone else does. Item number seventeen, new business.
Uh, one item, and I'm sure it's been on all of our minds. Today is ninety-five degrees and fifty mile an hour winds, and the Fourth of July is coming up. Normally, we have it on the agenda for fireworks every year. And maybe it's something we should. Do you want to put that on the agenda for next week?
For burn ban sort of thing. That's usually by the recommendation of our emergency manager, but I guess we could have it on the agenda going forward. We won't meet that last week in June, so that would be just previous to the Fourth of July. So we'll have, probably be deciding that.
I just did, just to put it on the agenda, not to take any action over.
Well, I'll put possible action because you'll have to take, I mean, if you want to take action. Yeah, it will be your last chance to take action.
Unless you call a special meeting to do that, but.
But.
I, I do have, I have had some, I, probably isn't the right place. Are we under new business or old?
New business right now.
This may be for the open.
We got that on.
But I've, I've been getting a lot of contacts from the lake residents. As you know, they are not, the city of Watertown is not going to have the traditional fireworks on the Fourth of July. Well, there's a group that has been put together, or they've put together a proposal to have the Fourth of July fireworks out in the middle of Lake Pesca. Out in the middle of Lake Pesca. The pushback is coming from the residents around the, the lake that really are concerned about the, contaminants that would occur if that happens. Of course, there's some chemical that's involved in making the fireworks, some heavy leads, some heavy metals. And of course, probably one thing that I'm more concerned about is the garbage. You know, when you start shooting off fireworks, I don't know if any of you have ever cleaned up after a fireworks show, but holy cow, it's a mess. And, you know, the, my, my neighbors up north of town in the, in the Sioux River watershed area, they've been working for the last thirty years to try to do everything they can to help clean up the Sioux River and lake. And then we allow something like this, I, I really have second thoughts. It's probably not setting a very good example. Now, th- this group of people, they've apparently accumulated a fair sum of money to do this. And they also, this is just hearsay. I understand that there's a secondary place that they could possibly have this if it, I think they indicated that it would be in case of the inclement weather. In other words, if the waves would be too hard or, I don't, whatever. Anyway, the group that's doing the pushback, that's been contacting me, and I've been talking with them pretty regularly and quite often, would probably, you know, split the difference and say, okay, we'll probably support the fireworks out at the lake if it's done on land. If they'll just move it on land and it'd be right near the lake, but it would be not on the lake. And I imagine we'll get that proposal to approve that fireworks display. It was supposed to go on the city.
Yeah, that would be the city.
It's, it's not ours.
We don't have any.
The lake is the city limits. We have no jurisdiction.
Right, so that one won't even come to us.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Yep. I don't know if game fish and parks would have to be involved. It might be.
Well, GF and P has, has direction on the water. I'm not sure what their involvement would be as far as the fire. I would think that they would absolutely want to be involved in that.
Especially on our land.
Yeah, so, but yeah, there's two, two different fireworks shows, just so we're not getting them confused. There will be one at the Anza soccer fields. Both of those are in town and one out at the lake on the fourth, so.
And both of that is city jurisdictions, so that would be something.
Let me check on something here for just a moment.
I, I know the, the people that I've been talking with and been in contact are very, very opposed to having it out on the lake. They just don't want to see the garbage and, and the contamination that it might cause out there. And I can understand, you know, it's very important. But, but they have come, they have said that they would consider it'd be alright if they would just move it on the land.
Okay, um, I guess Glenn Billhauer's city council chair, we could give him a call and he would.
Be able to explain this to us. Yep, do that one. Just hit nine, just hit nine. We'll, we'll do it on the speakerphone. Oh, yeah, don't, not on that one, Myron.
And thank you, Glenn, for, he's listening in and will be able to clarify.
Yeah, just give it to me.
Well, don't say it out loud.
Well, it's.
Campground, campground is city property.
Alright.
Yes, yes. I mean, we own it, but it is city property, so. Cause they've never done it out there before, have they, Memorial?
To Ringy Dingy. Hey, Glenn. Good morning. Thanks for sending us your message.
Yeah, I, I, I caught the comments that Myron was making. We too, or at least I have received some of the same comments. Just, just a little bit of background on that. I also engaged Dan Roderchak in moves fireworks, uh, as far as, you know, his take on the concerns of contaminants. And obviously, you know, he's got a bias one way or the other. But his feeling is the amount of contaminants in fireworks these days is so minimal. There's studies out there on the lakes around the country that the amount of contaminants is so minimal, that the amount of the going into the lake compared to what has been going into the lake in prior years when there were displays, or when City Park was allowed, the, the, the difference is so minimal that he was not concerned from his perspective of, about the, the contaminants. Now, obviously, you've got to take, you know, I respect that. You've got to take his word as a grain of salt, being a fireworks distributor. Uh, and then as to the, uh, the, the debris, that's always an issue. But I think the feeling is again, with banning the fireworks at City Park, uh, this year, that the debris around the lake, or in the lake, probably will not be any worse than what it was in prior years when City Park was allowed. Uh, so that's a little bit of background, and you can take that for what it's worth. But I also want to point out that regarding permitting, we did pass the permit, or we did approve the permit last night for the display on the lake. Apparently, we have the authority to approve that permit. I'm not quite sure where the D and R or game fish or parks weighed in on that. But, but we did approve the permit last night for the display on the lake.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Glenn. Appreciate it.
What this board probably is allowed to do though is, I mean, it is a, the campground is our property. Although it sits in city limits, you could probably take action to ban fireworks at the Memorial Park campground. It may be redundant, but.
I was gonna say, we already have that in place, don't we? Isn't that a county?
Do we?
We, yeah, we don't, we don't allow fireworks in the camp.
Yeah, I think we had.
I don't think we ever have allowed them in the park.
I, I just don't remember. If it's already in place, then we shouldn't have to do anything, and we still fall under the city's jurisdiction, so we should be covered.
No, Memorial Park was always one that we never allowed to.
Okay, alright.
They've never. Alright.
So it's kind of a meat point on our point, I guess. You know, the city's got it in hand and, yeah, whatever. But I, I think the people just need to be aware of that. You know, I love fireworks as much as anybody, or maybe more. I really enjoy fireworks, but, but, I always think, in the back of my mind, I still have embedded in my memory, you know, shooting fireworks off at home on the farm. Number one, mom was sure that the chickens would quit laying for about a month. The dog would go through the screen door, so I'd be, have to fix the screen door, afraid of the fireworks. And of course, then afterwards, those kids always had to clean up the mess. And then back in those days, I mean, there was paper all over, you know, it was a mess. So, so people just need to be, even on normal years, more conscious, they'll come out into a, a country road and shoot fireworks all night, then drive away and leave the mess.
So I guess I would suggest, like, if you're in contact with those people, maybe have them go work with the individuals that are doing it and see if they can come to some compromise, I guess, if they had some.
I think they are trying hard to work.
You know, and Myron, you brought up a good point. I, I would just like to stress that, that, you know, we're only a couple of weeks out from the Fourth of July. If, if we don't do this, it's banned. But every year, it seems like we have people that go out to county roads or, or out on, into the county and light off their fireworks and leave their debris laying around. Please don't do that. You know, if you're, if you're gonna go out onto private property and launch them off, whatever, but, but don't leave them on the right away for our county people to have to go out and pick up. Take, take pride in our county. That's what we need to do. So, that being said, thank you.
Alright. Is that it for the open? Anyone else have anything else we want to discuss? Sure. Do you want to come up here? Then everyone can hear you.
I think you have pushed the button. It's on.
Alright.
Are we still, like our guys, every once in a while, there has to be two people in a truck? Do we still mask? I've been asked that a couple of times. Do you still want our guys to mask or can they unmask? Being we've lifted the restrictions.
Yeah, they set their discretion.
I mean, it's basically CDC guidance, so if, if, you know, you're working together constantly anyway, it's kind of like a family. And so theoretically, you shouldn't have to. But if somebody has symptoms or is being tested, then, then, yeah, then the person that's being tested or has symptoms, pull them out of the picture, then folks that have been around him should mask up when they're interacting with other people. That's basically the CDC guidance, sorry, nutshell, so. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Rick.
Great question.
Alrighty, well, now we are on. We're on to item number nineteen, action to, I don't have anything for an executive session. Does anyone else have anything?
Move to adjourn.
Alright, got a motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned.
Good meeting, everyone. Thank you.